We are joined this evening by the NJROTC students from Garfield High School. So if you will please rise for the posting of the colors and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
One, two, three.
Now, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Ready, cut. Post, march. Colors, up. Order, colors. Ready, cut. Post the colors. Ready, two. About, face. Vote, eight.
Mr. Greco is going to introduce each of our students who took their time out of their brand-new, fresh summer to come in for us.
That's good. Tedes, Kendee Peet, Lisa Van Longse, Madison Conley, and Crystal Allen. Yeah, took their time out of their summer. I believe they take their time out of their summers to do the colors, to the board. Kendee is, I mean, have all, you're going to be junior, right?
Yeah.
They're all going to be juniors next year, so.
The high average grade point average is about 3.5, 3.7.
Ladies.
He also takes time out of his summer. Says it very dedicated to the board. Appreciate it very much. We have a lot of work to do as a board, particularly an executive session later, so we have decided we're going to postpone our community and school reflections for now. Everyone's going to treasure their stories and their hearts and bring them back next time, then we're going to save some time for that then. We do have some important communications and recognition though this evening, so we are going to go straight to that. We have the presentation of our distinguished emeritus certificates. Mr. Alexander, would you like to refer?
Sure. Good evening. I'd like to ask Deborah Geronda, please come forward. While she's coming forward, Mrs. Geronda and I worked together for several years at JDC, where she came and worked with all of our students tutoring after school. After more than 35 years of dedication and service, Ms. Deborah Geronda has announced that she will retire from Akron Public Schools. Deborah is a graduate from Garfield High School and received her bachelor's degree from the University of Akron. She later completed her master's of education from Kent State University. Ms. Geronda joined Akron Public Schools as she began her teaching career in 1979. Ms. Geronda taught at several elementary and middle schools within this district, including Hatton, Cybling, Goodyear, Litchfield, and Jennings. Ms. Geronda also spent many of her summers with Akron Public Schools students, teaching summer school classes. Throughout her teaching career, Ms. Geronda distinguished herself as a dedicated teaching professional. Throughout her teaching career, Ms. Geronda has recognized, sorry, was recognized as an outstanding teacher focused on student growth and learning. She has been described as a spark plug with enthusiasm about school that is contagious to colleagues and students. Ms. Geronda has also been described as a teacher that has mastered her ability to build positive reform for students and parents. In addition, Ms. Geronda has been recognized as having an infectious positive attitude that can, that all students can learn. Throughout her teaching career, Ms. Geronda has repeatedly been recommended on her collaborative efforts, working with students and colleagues to ensure that Akron students receive quality educational service. Ms. Geronda personified experience throughout her distinguished service to Akron Public Schools, and her presence will surely be missed. Thank you for your dedication, dedicated service to Akron Public Schools. We wish you much happiness in your retirement, Ms. Geronda. Thank you.
We have a gift list for Mr. Allen. Anything to say?
I'm not sure where to start. I have so many things, so many memories, and just seeing a lot of the faces in here today. I thank all of you, and it really, it really has been a rewarding career. I think it's time to pass it on to someone young and a little more energetic, although I will say I was fooling around online the other day, and I, on a whim, applied for a one-year limited contract as a math teacher in Hawaii. We'll see what happens. Thank you.
I don't think Mr. Bradford is here, so I'm going to read his anyhow. This is James Lewis Bradford. When Jim Bradford started his career with Akron Public Schools in 1987, I guess you could say that he had a sweet position. He worked in vocational department as a, as the baker in North High School. For the next eight, eight to nine years, he taught many students the art of baking and technique of running a successful business. In 1987, Jim got the call to report to Garfield High School as a new assistant principal. As a principal for an entire class at Garfield, he was responsible for making sure students were in school, talking with parents, attending many after-school functions, and handling, handing out discipline, just to name a few responsibilities. He was highly respected by students and staff. After leaving Garfield, he went on to become an assistant principal at Central Howard, and then on to Allen as assistant principal, in many duties, in many duties of personal, staff interaction, and curriculum and instruction. His retirement, his retirement in June of last year left very big shoes for the new assistant principal to feel. Even though Jim retired in 2013, he has been, been seen subbing in some of our buildings. He brings back to Akron Public Schools his love of the children, and his loyalty and dedication to teachers and fellow administrators. We, we are so appreciative of the willingness to support others and other assistance to many. You are more, you are more than missed, but I am sure we'll, we'll be seeing you soon, again assisting or assisting our students and staff as a visiting administrator. This is Jim Bradford, who was at Allen High School, and Mr. Bradford and I worked together as well when he first came to North High School as the baker, so I will, I wanted to make sure I presented these two. So can we have a hand for Mr. Bradford?
Thank you. This time we want to ask that Mr. Stephen Wallace Miller come forward. Stephen Miller served the Akron Public Schools faithfully as an educator for 35 years. He began his career as a teacher in the fall of 1979 at Goodrich Middle School. From Goodrich, he went on to teach at Roswell Kent Middle School and Garfield High School. Steve was an exemplary math teacher. In 1994, Steve left the classroom and became a resource teacher for the next three years. He performed his assignment at Rankin and Lincoln Elementary Schools. Steve assumed the title of technology specialist in 1997 and remained in that position for four years, and in 2001, a new challenge presented itself as Steve became the math learning specialist for all Akron Public Schools for the next 13 years. He remained in that position until his retirement in January of 2014. During the years, Steve was a teacher. He also enjoyed the title of coach in the area of athletics. He coached soccer, and my favorites, cross-country and track. While at Garfield High, he was once honored by his coaching peers by being selected as their coach of the year in track. In this day and age of high-profile individuals seeking fame and recognition, Steve was a breath of fresh air. Steve was a leader who was dedicated to Akron Public Schools. People follow him due to his being an honest individual with integrity. He had compassion for those with whom he worked. He built consensus around ideas and was inclusive in his instructional and professional development practices. Challenges were often referred to as rich problems. Leaders also led by example and still leads others as a reflection of his being an elder and youth group leader in his church. Again, one of my favorites. And he is truly an example for others to emulate. Family was and remains very important to Steve. He and his wife raised three children together. He is a very proud grandfather, and they, they think he is retired. They have grandchildren, you're not going to tell them. However, his grandchildren will certainly have something to say about that. Aretha Franklin once sang a song about respect. Respect is something you earn over time from those who interact with you. Steve earned his respect by actually walking with, walking the walk with his colleagues. He will be missed by all who work with him. We wish him the best as he takes on all the other rich promises or problems and all his future endeavors. Steve, good luck and God bless you and your wonderful new journey.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate this honor when I think back of all the wonderful experiences I've had, the many wonderful people that I've met. It is even harder at this time when I'm thinking of Akron Schools not to say "we." So thank you for the chance to be an emeritus, that I can continue to always say "we." And I'd, I'd like to thank my wife Nancy for coming, and my daughter Joanna, who has finished her education degree.
All right, I'm getting very excited about mine, so I'm going to go next. Mine has many exclamation points. In fact, I don't think I've ever seen one of these written with more exclamation points. Can Pam Wheeler please come forward? I love exclamation points. I'm going to start reading as Pam's walking. Congratulations to Pam Wheeler, double exclamation point. Pam has decided to retire at the end of this year. Pam is a product of Akron Public Schools, graduating from Bookdell High School. She continued her education at the University of Akron, receiving her bachelor's degree in elementary education and also her master's equivalency. She also has attended Kent State and Ashland Universities. Pam did her student teaching at Harris Elementary School in the third grade. She also began her teaching career with Akron Public Schools at Harris, teaching first grade. Let's figure that out. Let's see. She also, let's see. During her career with APS, she also worked at Hemming, Heminger, Heminger, sorry, Findlay and Margaret Park for eight years, Lover for six years, and David Hill for 16 years, all in third grade. As, oh, exclamation point. As Pam has been to Akron Public Schools, she did take time out to have a family. She has two children. Her son Scott is married and is currently working at the Akron Opportunity Center. Pam's second son Kyle is finishing up his degree. Pam always dreamed of being able to take a cruise after she retired. Well, it looks as though this is one dream she's eager to see come true now that she's officially retired. Double exclamation point. I was fortunate, oh, this, this person says, she was fortunate enough to work with Pam her last two years as principal at David Hill, and she was warm and nurturing to her students and always had their best interests at heart. She always had a calming effect on her class, which allowed her students to feel comfortable to step out of the box and express themselves without worry. Pam also demanded their best, instilling work, good work habits, and a willingness to build strong, trusting student relationships with foster, which fostered positive academic results. Having been fortunate enough to work with Pam when she, when this person was principal, she's truly a team player. She was a great sergeant of the guard at the mess hall. For those non-military, she monitored the cafeteria during lunch periods, exclamation point. I had to beg and plead for her to stay on and finally convinced her. Could not have made it without her calming yet no-nonsense demeanor. So Pam, no more lunchrooms, just the calm ocean breezes, plenty of time to enjoy your retirement, double exclamation point. Thank you for 35 years of dedicated service to Akron Public Schools, double exclamation point.
If I may, I would like to call my family, my two sons and my daughter-in-law.
I would do what she says. There's double exclamation points.
I know they're proud of me. I've worked very hard. I'm proud of them. I'm expecting my first grandchild very soon, so we're going to add to APS. And again, I've enjoyed my 35 years here in the district. Come across a lot of people. A lot of people know me from, as she said, my demeanor and whatnot. It's kind of bittersweet at this point. I know I'm going to miss the children. I'm going to miss the routine, but I'm not, not ever going to miss being a teacher, because that was my heart and that's something that I love doing. That's all.
Thank you. Cindy is a 33-and-a-half-year veteran of Akron Public Schools. Her first assignment was teaching English at Goodyear Middle School. She then taught French and language arts at Perkins Middle, Perkins Middle School. In 1992, she moved to Firestone High School, teaching French and Spanish, and stayed there for 20 years. Since then, she has taught all levels of French, including AP and IB French. Cindy's personal goal, as she finishes out her career in her new position as one of the district's first core group of consulting teachers, is to help teachers new to our district reach their fullest potential and remain in the ranks of the world-class educators in Akron Public Schools for a long, rewarding career. As a consulting teacher, she mentored 26 new first-year teachers, which is quite a workload for someone retiring. That has three exclamation points. Cindy was also the Akron Public Schools Teacher of the Year in 2003. She enjoys traveling. Well, now you'll have plenty of time to travel and enjoy your retirement. Thank you for your dedicated service to the Akron Public Schools.
Somewhere in my pedigree with West Junior High, which was a year, the year it closed was the only year I was there, they decommissioned the building, and then I went on to purpose. And that one year, that one single year was 10 years of experience, and I don't want that overlooked. That was quite a ride. I want to thank all the principals for whom I've worked, and I've had the best four principals on the planet in Akron Public Schools. I want to thank my colleagues from whom I learned so much. You don't need to learn everything brand-new when you have colleagues that will come around you, like Rebecca Haymaker-Mize, who recently passed, Diana Jones, who retired before me, Mike Householder, and Mark Devoe, and Cindy Arcuri, and Donna Kervman, and so on, just colleagues that were, no matter what you needed, they were there. I just have to acknowledge the presence of my mother, Julia Westfall, and my husband, Don Mathias, who have been on this ride for a long time with me, and I do appreciate the support that they and my kids and family at large have given me. Consulting teaching was, was quite a challenge. I enjoyed my ride. I enjoyed the experience, and I was only too happy to let it go on February 28th of this year. So thank you all, I appreciate it. I have enjoyed my affiliation with Akron Public Schools since January of 1979, so thank you all. Thank you very much.
Hello?
Hi.
Sharon Otto has retired from Akron Public Schools with over 34 years of services to staff and students. As a librarian technician and classroom assistant, Sharon has worked with the majority of students at Allen High School, Jennings CLC, Heminger, now closed, Betty Jane, I've been for the past several years, Ritzman CLC. You can only imagine how many lives she has touched in the past three decades. If you were to talk with her colleagues, they would tell you that Sharon has always been a dedicated worker. She would arrive early to prepare his children and provide assistance to the teachers. There were times when she would be the first face that children would see at the start of their day. She always gave them a smile and encouraged, encouraged them to do their best. Everyone does not have the patience to work with children with special needs, but Sharon Otto had both patience and abilities to assist not only in the classroom, but also under library. I am sure that when school resumes in the fall, students and their families will be looking for Ms. Otto. They will miss her warm smile, assistance, and encouragement. We wish to all, we wish you all the best as you begin your new chapter in your life, and we thank you for your many well-done years of service.
Thank you. One thing that I forgot. For the last two years, I've been at Windermere CLC, I'm three days a week as a librarian. I had most of my career over at Ritzman, and I have a lot of friends. They came tonight for me from Ritzman, but over at Windermere, I made new friends, so the last two years, I've shared their library, and then that's where my heart and goal was, and I have a degree in education elementary, but I fell in love with the library. Thank you.
Yeah, you, I told them that, Sharon. I don't know what happened.
These are my, one of my former students, Becky, Rebecca Six. She was a library helper and her mom. My good friend Nancy Cantrell, and Helen Richmond, and my really good friend Pat Cochrane-Cain, they give me support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'd like to ask Frances Sandor. Frances Sandor has retired from Akron Public Schools with over 34 years of experience as a school secretary. We all know that the school secretaries wear many hats. The secretary is the parent contact, dry clothes provider, school phone operator, inventory specialist, transportation coordinator, supplies manager, program planner, health specialist, banker, and mom to manage them. These are just a few of the responsibilities that Fran has taken on and done with expertise and professionalism for over three decades. Fran began her career with Akron Public Schools in 1980 with the child study department. From child studies, she moved to Robinson Elementary, where she stayed for a little more than two years. In 1984, she took on the middle school setting and was secretary for higher middle school from 1984 to 1996. She must have loved the middle school students, as she was a reasonable and calming presence for the students and staff. It was not until 1997 that she decided to take her talents to Allen High School, and this must have been a little bit of a culture shock to move from middle school to high school, but Fran accepted and met the challenge and succeeded in all areas. Fran has been an inspiration to many. She always conducts school business with dignity and professionalism. She will be missed, but our hope is that she will now take the time to enjoy herself and always remember us with a smile and a kind, kind heart. Well done.
I ended my career at Allen, but I, I'm, I'm going to, you said, don't do that. Actually, I am a product of APS. I graduated from Allen High School. My two sons are here. They graduated from Allen High School. My granddaughter just graduated this week from Allen High School. So for the past 55 years, I've been connected with the Allen community in one way or the other. Some of my, some of the, I just realized this just recently, that great, not great things, but really momentous things happened when I was at Allen High School. I was a junior, and I was in room 115 when Kennedy was shot. I was right in that same office when 9/11 happened. I said, I got to get out of here. I've got to get out of here, because something bad else is going to happen, but not really. I absolutely bleed orange and white. My family is here, my two sons, and my two grandchildren, and my daughter-in-law. But thank you very much for letting me be part of that family.
James. Well, I'll just read James' next quote here. Mr. Filco is retiring from Akron Public Schools with 38 years of dedicated service. He began his career as a utility man on the grounds department. His location was transportation department, since he was responsible for many goods that are delivered throughout the system. I bet he's walked into every public school. In 1990, Mr. Filco's job title changed. He became a small-engine repairman, a job title that he would have for the next 24 years. We can all thank Mr. Filco for making sure that lawnmowers, snow blowers, weed eaters, and other small-engine equipment were serviced and ready to go at the change of each season. He became the man to see, to solve the problems that many others thought were impossible to solve. He was a teacher and mentor to others. Over the years, the equipment may have changed, but the service and dedication given by Mr. Filco remained the same. Repair and safety were his major concerns and accomplishments. While others may have given more service by working directly with students, Mr. Filco worked behind the scenes. He made sure the equipment used by the building custodians was ready for use. Thanks to Mr. Filco, sidewalks were cleared in the winter, and grass cut and manicured in the spring. We thank you for your many years of faithful and loyal service, you've done so much to assist others. We appreciate you, and we wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. Finally, I have Carl, also known as Joe Kachovick. Kachovick? Joe Kachovick started his career with Akron Public Schools in August 1977 as a maintenance helper. Within the year, he was promoted to carpenter, where he worked for 16 years. Throughout his 37 years of service, Joe has been described as hardworking and diligent in providing quality service to our schools. Joe continually provided sound leadership and set an excellent example of a straw-mork ethic and commitment to service. Following a specific carpentry job at one of the school buildings, the principal commented Mr. Kachovic for his high-quality workmanship, cooperation and communication throughout the project, and willingness for Joe and his carpentry crew to provide such excellent service to the school. Joe recently shared what he misses most after retirement will be the calls he would receive in the middle of the night in response to an emergency. Each time, Joe would respond to those night, late-night calls with his consistent, strong work ethic and commitment to quality. After 37 years of dedicated service, Mr. Carl Joe Kachovic retired on May 31st, 2014. We wish him much happiness since retiring and thank him for his many years of service and dedication to the Akron Public Schools. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you all so much for coming out. Thank you for all of your dedication and your service. This is one of our favorite meetings of the year because of getting to recognize you and all that you've done. Now, if you'd give me just a second or two, we're going to let you all get up, I think, at the same time. So, let me just double-check and make sure. Are Ms. Koffler and Ms. Jingo here?
Yes.
Okay. What we're going to do then is I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session to allow these ladies to address the board. So, that way, it will give everyone opportunity to go celebrate your retirements and your emeritus awards. So, can I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
So, pursuant to, oh, roll call first or do I read it first?
Read it.
Read it first, okay. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G5, I hereby move that the board adjourn into executive session for the purpose of considering matters required to be confidential by federal law regulations or statutes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
All right, we'll take five minutes and let everyone celebrate and thank you so much for coming. We're back in, from our executive session and we are moving on to our next order, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from both the regular meeting for May 27th and the special meeting of June 4th.
Moved and properly seconded.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo. Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Next, our superintendent's recommendations.
Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 73 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So, move.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments about any of these? I know we have quite a few folks who, bless your hearts for sticking around. Thank you so much. Roll call, Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes, abstained from item number 68.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes, abstained. I'm from here.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
And at this time, I'd like Ms. McVeigh to go over some new assignments.
Ms. Rowland, if you could please stand up. Regina Rowland obtained a bachelor's degree from University of Akron in 2003 and a master's degree from Akron U in 2004. She's seen her principal's license in May of 2009. She did her social studies student teaching at Manchester Public Schools in 2002, 2003 school year, and then she went to Utah to Salvia to work as an English as a second language instructor, returning to Ohio and working for Anna House and the daughter's station. Ms. Rowland began substitute teaching for Akron Schools and then taught the U of North High School at North. In August 2003, she was hired by Akron Public Schools as a career-based instruction teacher. She was assigned to Central Howard and then later to Ellitt. In 2011, Ms. Rowland was promoted to a high school assistant principal in the side of Akron Public Schools. In 2013, she was then assigned as an elementary assistant principal in the side of the CLC, where she worked under the guidance and leadership of Principal Megan Manning. She's being recommended tonight for an elementary school principal position and will become the principal at Piper. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for this wonderful opportunity. I'm really excited about serving the staff and students and the community of Piper and I look forward to that challenge. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jennifer Douglas.
Jennifer is a graduate of Norton High School. She obtained a bachelor's degree from Miami University in 2004 and a master's degree in school psychology from John Carroll in 2006. She received her principal's license in September of 2013. Miss Douglas did her year of school psychology internship with Akron Public Schools in the 2006, 2007 school year and then began her school psychologist career with Akron in August 2007 and continued working as a school psychologist through 2013. In 2013, she was selected as an aspiring principal academy intern and in that capacity, she worked the 2013, 14 school year at Paul and Earl, under the excellent guidance and leadership of Luvonica Davis. We're here with her tonight. Ms. Douglas is being recommended for an elementary school principal position and she'll be the principal at Boras CLC.
I would like to thank the board as well for this opportunity. I'm very excited to engage with the staff, students and families of Boris and continue building on the foundation that they've already begun working towards their student learning achievements. So, thank you so much.
I'd like to do just three very short introductions without the bios tonight for a couple of people. Kristy Campbell, if you could stand up, is a current teacher in the district and she has been recommended tonight for dean of students position and she'll be working at Ennis.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I'm excited to start a student chapter in my career. I'd like to thank this house who gave me a lot of support and guided story my time as interim dean of students at Ennis and Ellitt for its work. Thank you.
It takes me to Andrea House. She is the current dean of students and she's been recommended tonight for an assistant principal position at a middle school and she's going to be at Ennis.
I look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you. Jessica. Jessica Sacks is, has been a dean of students and she's being promoted to an assistant principal at middle school level and she'll be located and working at which one of those locations.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I've learned a lot in my time at AAA and I look forward to this new challenge in a different setting to further my career. So, thank you very much.
Next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration five motions and five resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So, move.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions on the business fair recommendations?
I'm a little behind. I do have, is this the one we're buying off of the two books? Yes. My question is, how, how is it that I'm getting some kind of discount on that kind of body? I don't probably have to sell it to somebody before now, but... I think these textbooks are, I mean, they're $150 a pop. Exactly. And the math college price, they get... No, not necessarily. High school textbooks are expensive as well. Plus, all of these, all of our curriculum adoptions are coming with digital content as well. We postponed the purchase of them because when we did that upgrade or proposed that upgrade in 2012, there were a lot of companies that were stamping, you know, they are common core compliant when items weren't and our curriculum staff decided to postpone that until we got some additional research and now they are coming, you know, and complying with the new educational standards, but $150 for a textbook is not completely on the line because there are some textbooks that, like at the college level, that are a lot, maybe double in price than those. And we have a whole team of people who redo the research on our curriculum materials. I'm sure if there's any other questions, Karen Gija can answer those, but there's a committee of people who review these and... When you're comfortable with the fact that it's pretty standard for work. Absolutely. I'm still in the 80s.
That would have been a decent price for a math book in the 80s. All right, so, where are we?
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
There is no president's report again in the interest of time and the board's brain and power being reserved. Nothing from Mr. Pearson as far as correct, all right. And committee reports, I see we have some from legal and contracts.
For the second reading of three, we have policy 1145, which is new retirement of board employees. We have policy 3145, which is new retirement of board employees, and policy 4145 revise retirement of board employees. That is the second and third read.
I know that finance and the finance committee said that they were going to read their donations next time around because they couldn't be here. And anything from instructional policies, et cetera, et cetera? All right, no unfinished or new business. So, we are going to now ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 to discuss the appointment of an employee or official of the school district.
So, move.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.